All right. Good evening and welcome to the Boise City Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing. A few things to start out with for tonight's proceedings. Everyone from the public entering the hearing virtually has been automatically muted and cannot speak. As the item you're interested in comes up for discussion, you'll be called upon and unmuted. There is a chat function in Zoom, however, this is not part of the record and should only be used if technical difficulties arise. Our procedures for public hearings begins with a presentation from the planning team. Then we'll go to the applicant and then the representative of the Registered Neighborhood Association, followed by questions from the commission. After that, we proceed to public testimony, starting with those who are in person. And then who signed up on the sign up sheet in advance, and then anyone else who raises their hand virtually. If you're attending through your telephone, you can type in star nine to raise your hand. Each member of the public is allowed up to three minutes for testimony. We are strict at this time as it is limited in code. Finally, the applicant is allowed five minutes for rebuttal, after which the hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate and render a decision. Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Crystal. We are citizen volunteers appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. We make final decisions on conditional use permits, variances and appeals, and recommendations to the city council on subdivisions, rezones, annexations and code comprehensive plan amendments. Any decision made tonight may be appealed to the city council, provided that the appeal has been filed within 10 days of this hearing. In order to file an appeal, you must have given written or oral testimony at tonight's meeting. So that's why it's important to give your name and address when you testify tonight. We utilize a consent agenda. This means that if the applicant agrees with the staff report, and if there is no public opposition, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. All items that are placed on the consent agenda are approved with one motion without further public comment. For items not on the consent agenda, we will hold a full public hearing in the order just detailed a few minutes ago with staff, applicant, neighborhood association, and the public testimony. Thank you all for attending tonight. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Danley. Moore.
Here.
Schaefer. Mooney.
Here.
Seha.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Dong.
Here.
Stallings. Five present, three absent.
Thank you. So the first item that we'll take care of tonight is item number seven, that's the UP twenty-five dash twenty-six Idaho Electric Signs at thirty-six hundred North Harbor Lane. A conditional use permit for an offerment, freestanding sign on one point seven seven acres in an R-two zone. This item was not posted onsite, though it's not a public hearing. So if you're here for that one, we're going to defer that to October sixth. Alright. So moving on, we'll start with creation of consent agenda. I have minutes from the planning and zoning work session and meeting on August fourth and August eleventh. That I'd like to place on the consent agenda. And then several time extensions. I have item number A, PUD twenty-one dash thirty-five, Western State Home. It's part of the legacy code. All of these are part of the legacy code. Yeah. At seventeen twenty, South Curtis Road, a time extension for a conditional use permit for a planned residential development comprised of four single-family homes on point five six acres in an R-one C residential traditional zone. Item B, it's PUD twenty-three dash nineteen, Jeff Reed. Twenty, twelve, six, eight, five, West McMillan Road. There's a time extension for a conditional use permanent for a residential planned unit development comprised of four multifamily units on point three two acres in an R-one C residential traditional zone. Item number C, PUD twenty-three dash nine, at ninety-seven ninety-seven West Shield Avenue. A two-year time extension for a conditional use permit for a planned residential development comprised of ten dwelling units and a parking reduction on point nine five acres located in R-two residential compact zone. Item D, PUD twenty-three dash fourteen, Beacon Engineering and Serving. At fifteen twenty-six North Steelwood Avenue, request for two-year time extension for a conditional use permit for a planned residential development comprised of nineteen multifamily units on point five eight acres in the MX-three DA, mixed-use active with a development agreement zone. And finally, E, PUD twenty-three dash eleven, twelve hundred South Lugville Avenue. A request for a two-year time extension for a conditional use permit for a planned residential development comprised of ten multifamily units on point three five acres in R-three residential urban zone. Alright, so the time extensions, those aren't a public hearing, they're just a time extension. Moving on to the remainder of items eligible for consent. We have item number two, that's SUV twenty-five dash fifty-one, Elder Street Hotel Subdivision at thirty-six thirty-five West Elder Street. A preliminary final plat for a mixed-use subdivision comprised of three buildable lots on eight point eight three acres in an MX-one AI-O DA. That's a mixed-use neighborhood with airport influence, area overlay and development agreement zone. Is the applicant present with us tonight? And are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of staff report? Let the record show that they are. And is anybody here, either in person or online, here to testify in opposition to item number two? Nine. Seeing none, I'd like to place item number two on the consent agenda. Moving on to item number three is also eligible. CUP twenty-five dash twenty-four Maverick Towers at twelve hundred North Curtis Road. The conditional use permit for a monopole associated with a wireless communications facility to exceed fifty-five feet on five point one acres in an I-one industrial light zone. And is the applicant present tonight? You are? And are you in agreement with terms and conditions of staff report? Let the record show that they are. And is anybody here, either in person or online, here to testify in opposition to item number three? Seeing none, I'd like to place item number three on the consent agenda. Item number eight. Is our next eligible for the consent agenda, that's CUP twenty-five dash eighteen for Design West Architects. This was deferred from August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, I think. At sixty-nine twenty-nine South Supply Way. It's a conditional use permit for an office used to occupy more than twenty-five percent of the gross floor area of a primary structure in an industrial zone on one point oh six acres in an I-one AI-O W U I O, light industrial with airport influence overlay and wildland urban interface overlay zone. Is the applicant present tonight? And are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of staff report? Let the record show that they are. And is anybody here, either in person or online, here to testify in opposition to item number eight? Seeing none, I'd like to place item number eight on the consent agenda. And finally, eligible for consent is item number nine. That is SUV twenty-five dash forty-nine Campus Corner Subdivision at fifteen oh one South Chrisway Drive. It's a preliminary and final plat for a residential subdivision comprised of three buildable and one common lots on point two nine acres in R-three residential urban zone. And is the applicant present tonight? And are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of staff report? Let the record show that they are. And is anybody in person or online here to testify in opposition to item number nine tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to place item number nine on the consent agenda. To summarize. I propose item, the minutes from August fourth and eleventh work session and meeting. Items A, B, C, D, E, and three, two, three, and eight and nine on the consent agenda, and we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moody.
I recommend we approve the consent agenda with the items we talked about, which are meeting minutes from work session and meeting minutes from four and eleven August. Time extensions, items A, B, C, D, E, and A, B, C, D, N, E, as well as items number two, three, eight and nine.
I'll second.
Perfect. I have a motion from Commissioner Moody and a second from Commissioner Seha. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Moore. Yes. Mooney.
Yes.
Seha.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Dong.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you very much, and good luck with your projects. Alright, moving right along to item number one. This is CUP twenty-five dash sixteen, The Land Group at six-five-five West Parkview, Parkside View Lane. It's a modification to a conditional use permit to reduce density by more than twenty-five percent in an existing planned unit development on four point eight nine, four point nine eight acres in R-one B H S O W U I O residential suburban with hillside development overlay and wildland urban interface overlay zone. Mr. Moser, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, before we get started on that, may I take a, just a moment? I wanted to recognize a couple people before we get started with our regular agenda. Just while we have a captive audience, before people start to trickle away. But we have a couple folks that have been duly serving as volunteer and then also in a work capacity for the PNC for quite some time that we want to recognize today is Commissioner Mooney's last hearing. And we just wanted to thank him for all his years of service from the dais and helping to build a city for everybody. And then Officer Moreno back there is also his last hearing, and he has helped us out for many years. And we're just thankful to both of you for the time and energy you've spent with us. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Crystal. And with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The applicant requests a modification to a conditional use permit to reduce the project density by more than twenty-five percent in an existing planned unit development on four point nine eight acres located at six-five-five West Parkside View Lane in an R-one B zone, which is also located in a hillside development overlay and the wildland urban interface overlay. The property is located on the east side of Bogus Basin Road, approximately a mile north of Hill Road. It is surrounded by a variety of uses, including an elementary school to the west, detached single-family homes to the north, a golf course to the east, and a small commercial property to the south. In addition, is located at the intersection of arterial and collector roadway. Basically, the applicant is requesting a modification to a previously approved conditional use permit from twenty nineteen to reduce the project density from thirteen to eleven dwelling units, which is shown on the slide. Project has a little history, and in twenty nineteen, the original planned development contained seventeen dwell units comprised of twelve townhomes and five detached single-family homes. The project density was reduced administratively in twenty twenty-one to thirteen dwelling units through the conversion of six townhomes into three detached single-family homes. Then in twenty twenty-three, the applicant made a request to the commission to convert the remaining townhomes into detached single families into detached single-family homes, which was denied. I will note that there is an error in the deep, in the project report. The project report states that the overall density reduction of forty is at forty-one percent. However, the correct density reduction is thirty-five. And since the applicant is proposing to lose six lots from the over, overall, from the original seventeen. Also that the planning team did receive a letter of support from a neighbor, which was received late, was received late and after the project port was published. And that, that letter was in support. The original planned unit development approval in twenty nineteen included a variance for a six-foot-high retaining wall within the front setback and reduced lot sizes and reduced interior and rear yard setbacks. The planning team does not, does not support the proposed modifications since it is not consistent with the required findings for the development code. The purpose of the legacy development code, PUD ordinance, was to provide a benefit to the public and the developer by granting waivers from the development code standards. The waivers granted the project, granted to this project are listed here and include reduced lot sizes, reduced rear and side building setbacks to facilitate a creative and innovative project design, which included two different building types and, and also amenities. However, the proposed modification would create an exclusively detached, single-family housing development, which was not, which is not an innovative project design. In addition, the goals and policies of the conference of plan promotes a mix of housing types and higher densities in this area, which is not supported by the proposed modification. As stated previously, the density reduction would convert the project into a standard detached, single-family development. In addition, the site is not large enough to accommodate the proposed use with, without the waivers permitted through the original PUD, which were granted to promote a good project design with different housing types. In summary, the planning team finds the conditional use modification does not comply with the required findings and recommends denial. Thank you.
Perfect. Mr. Moser, next we will hear from the applicant. Please state your name and address, and you'll have ten minutes.
Madam Chair, my name's Tamara Thompson. I'm with The Land Group. With me tonight to help present is the property owner, Brian Scott with All Scott Real Estate, and Danielle Strollo, our land use counsel, Given Spursley. I do have a little PowerPoint here. Is that working? Okay, thank you. We're pleased to present the PUD modification application for the Highland Heights subdivision. The property is generally located in the northeast corner of Bogus Basin Road and Curling. And I've highlighted the four parcels in, that we're talking about today. Those are on Curling Drive. The site was previously the home of a church. Back in twenty eighteen, my client, All Scott Real Estate, purchased the property from the church after they moved to another site. In October of twenty eighteen, we submitted applications to the city of Boise for the subdivision and the PUD. This is the previous condition of what it looked like there. Since, since those approvals, construction of the subdivision improvements commenced and the final plat recorded in July of twenty twenty-one. Since then, five homes have been constructed. This is a recent photo that I took last week of the site. It's a, it's a beautiful development. There's a few existing condition pictures that were taken last week. Construction of the subdivision. I'm sorry, I just said that Bogus Basin is the only access onto the site, and it does have private drives internal to the site. That access that you see on the top left is the main access. The bottom left is looking up uphill on Bogus Basin Road. You can see the, what we had the variance for is the, the retaining walls. On the right-hand side is the Curling Drive frontage. And, and then interior, that bottom is one of the patio homes. Please note that sidewalks were provided along all the street frontages and internal to the private, private roads. The request before you is to modify the approved plan unit development for this site to combine, combine four lots that were originally contemplated to be single-family attached townhouse lots into two single-family detached lots to accommodate market command, demand. The prior application for this request was denied in twenty twenty-three. In its denial, Planning and Zoning Commissioner Gillespie instructed the applicant to reapply in a couple of years if demand for the townhome lots did not materialize. This is the current situation. Townhome lots have not sold in over four years despite efforts. Converting them to patio homes provides housing that will actually be built rather than leaving land vacant. The request meets the R-one B zoning standards. All lots exceed the minimum area in the R-one B zone and the width of fifty feet. The proposed modification will reduce four existing lots to two lots while remaining consistent with the R-one B zoning designation. While the staff report says the site is not large enough, this development meets all the criteria of the R-one B zoning, including lot size requirements and overall density. The minimum lot area for the resultant parcels is nine thousand five hundred and fifty-three square feet, which is above the minimum of nine thousand square feet. And the average lot width for the resultant parcels is approximately seventy-nine feet, which is above the minimum of the fifty feet in the R-one B zone. The site is large enough to accommodate this request. Lots fifteen and sixteen combined will be thirteen thousand thirty-four square feet. And lots nineteen and twenty combined will be nine thousand five hundred and fifty-three square feet. The combined parcels are also consistent with other lots in the project, which range from ten thousand one hundred and ninety square feet to approximately a half an acre at twenty-seven five hundred and nineteen square feet. The site is large enough to accommodate the proposed use in all the yards, open spaces, sidewalks, walls, fences, parking, landscaping and other such features that are required by city code. We are not seeking any setback reductions to accommodate the new combined lots or any other changes from what is allowed in the current zoning code. The proposal is responsible density. Eleven homes on four point nine eight acres equates to two point two five units per acre, which is within the limits of the R-one B zone, which allows up to four point eight. The proposed location is supported by the comprehensive plan. Single-family homes surround this subdivision, and single-family is consistent with both surrounding zoning and the comprehensive plan's vision for the area. The proposed use will not create negative impacts. This is a density reduction to the Highlands area. Fewer units means less hillside disturbance, lower traffic volumes and reduced service demands. While staff emphasizes a mix of housing types, this products, project still provides variety with both estate lots and patio homes, meeting the intent of Blueprint Boise. These are existing patio homes within the project that have been constructed. And these are a couple of the estate homes that have been constructed. The project will continue to provide diversity of housing with two housing types. The six patio home lots offer ample, ample livable space and smaller yards, providing lower outdoor maintenance responsibility, ideal for older homeowners. And the five estate lots in the project are consistent with surrounding foothill subdivisions and desired by families. Utility services are already connected to serve the properties, and stormwater will be continued to be retained onsite. All homes will take access from the private lane, West Parkside View. And pedestrian vehi, and vehicular infrastructure is already in place and provides for safe connectivity to surrounding development. As part of our application, the project will add a new public amenity by providing a new bicycle repair station along North Bogus Basin Road, designed to help support the numerous bikers that embark on the, on the climb up to Bogus Basin or to trail heads along the way. And my client, Brian Scott, wishes to say a few things.
Thank you. And if you'll also state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Brian Scott, All Scott Real Estate, five oh one East Baybrook Court, Boise, Idaho. Eight-three-seven-zero-six, six. Thank you for considering our request. We are simply asking to reduce the four townhome lots to two single-family lots. Despite our efforts to partner with builders, we are just land developers. Despite our, our efforts to partner with builders to construct these townhomes and to market these townhomes to third parties, we have not been able to materialize anything, leaving these two lots vacant. We simply wish to see this project be fulfilled with new homes being built in this location and providing new housing that is compatible with the rest of the subdivision and surrounding area. Like I said, these deals, actually, these lots have been under contract, and each person that has come to us wanting to buy them has wanted to combine the townhome lots into a single-family home and build a single-family residence. Both times they've fallen apart because of our inability to get these lot lines erased and get these lots combined. As Tamara said, our project fully complies with the R-one B standards. All lots exceed minimum area and width, widths, setbacks are maintained, and no variances are required. Density is at two point two five units per acre, remains with code limits and aligns with the surrounding single-family context of homes, the Highland Heights School and the golf course. You know, Boise Blueprint or Blueprint Boise calls for a diversity of housing types, which we are still providing. The small patio homes that have been constructed and the larger estate homes are drastically different when you're on site. There is a very nice mix of housing there that looks compatible with everything that is surrounding it. And this, this PUD continues to broaden those choices by providing this, this, these multiple uses or, or choices. And if we combine this, it ensures that viable market-ready construction will be able to take place in the near future and remove our vacant lots. We have held, I think, three neighborhood meetings during the course of this process. We have not received one negative comment or one person in opposition of our request. And for these reasons, we just respectfully request that you approve our CUP twenty-five dash sixteen, which satisfies the requirements for CUP approval under Boise City Code, subject to any reasonable condition. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we will move to the Neighborhood Association. Is there anybody representing Highlands Neighborhood Association, either in person or online?
I'm the president of the association.
Oh. Okay. Alright, well, and I see Crystal shaking her head for anybody else, so moving on to questions from the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seha.
I have a question for the applicant. And so in the staff report and as you identified in your presentation, it seems as though one of the main reasons, if not the main reason you guys are before us is because of the statement that former Planning and Zoning Commissioner Gillespie had shared when he voted a couple of years ago to deny the request at that point. Is that, am I correct in, in that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Seha, we would be back here before you asking for this because the lots have remained vacant and, and the market demand is for the patio home instead of the townhouse. But that definitely was part of our conversation in twenty twenty-three, where Commissioner Gillespie did say, "Give it a little bit more time and then come back." So that, that definitely supports this too.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have a follow-up for staff.
Please.
So, Mr. Moser, is it common for the city to do, is it, is it common for us to approve applications before us based on an economic basis?
Madam, Madam Chair, members of the commission, usually we do not take in consideration economic basis in, in our, when looking at the required findings.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moody.
A question for staff. David, the, what I, what I'm trying to understand is that, is the PUD design, desire from the city's perspective is to provide multiple products? Is that, was that kind of the overriding agenda from the city's perspective?
Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair, Commissioners, that is correct. Also, by getting or keeping the townhomes, we also increase the density of the site too.
Okay, follow-up, Madam Chair.
Please.
So is, is it a subjective interpretation then to say that the, we've got estate homes, we've got patio homes, we, and we were, we're gonna have townhomes. So we, is that accurate to say we were gonna provide three housing types? And now we're, the applicant's asking you to go to estate homes and patio homes only. Is that accurate?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, from the staff perspective, the, the patio homes and the large, and the other larger lot, the estates, estate homes, we, we view those all as just detached, single-family. They're just bigger homes on bigger parcels, or for some of them, the other ones are just slightly smaller, or smaller homes on slightly smaller parcels. But they're all just detached from our perspective. So we would say is just with the, it would be just two product types if you consider the townhomes and the detached.
Right. That was a question, I think. So what we state in the staff report, we, the city state is that the site's uniquely suited for high-density development. um, the sites uniquely suited for high-density development. Um, is that really our statement when the applicants before are saying we can't make anything happen here?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, uh, staff's perspective would definitely like to see higher density development at the corner of an arterial and a collector roadway, next to a school and other amenities such as that. Um, that is definitely our desire. Um, I understand that there are concerns in the sense of the financial that they can't find somebody willing to develop the townhomes. I, I realize that detached, single-family homes is probably more desirable from a market standard, but we definitely, from the city perspective, want to see a higher density mixed-use project at this location due to the site surroundings.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Torres.
Uh, my question's for the applicant. Um, one of the questions I try to ask, um, whenever we have one of these come up, and I don't always remember to, but I will this time. Um, as far as these houses go, the, the two potentially three different product types here from your perspective. What pricing are you looking at these, for these to go at roughly? I mean, obviously the estate homes in particular do not look like they're super affordable homes, but obviously that depends on the type of home and square footage and all that factor. Can you kind of give me an idea of what, uh, you, what price you think these kinds of homes would go for and how they might meet the city's affordability goals as well? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, uh, Commissioners. Uh, we, like I said, we're not vertical developers. Um, so we're, we're land developers. We see the, the, the patio homes are being sold or we're trying to sell them at, at around three hundred thousand for the lot. Uh, we think a built product in there is going to sell for a million to a million and a half, where the estate homes are, are almost double that in both categories. Does that answer your question?
It, it does. Yeah. As, as a follow-up, the townhomes, if they were to be built, do you have a rough estimate of what those might go for?
You, you know, I, I don't know. Uh, again, I kind of live in the, the ground development space and not the vertical space. Um, obviously building costs have, have changed dramatically over the years, and I think it's been part of the problem with trying to get the, the size of these townhomes to get them built, uh, and still make any type of money on them for what they're, they're probably worth. Um, you know, the site is challenging. It's, it's not a site that's probably best suited for townhomes. It's, uh, we're in the hillside, we're in the wooey. Um, we've got some significant challenges there. Uh, so I think it, it makes building costs higher and it makes it just more and more challenging to put that type of product there, which is why it hasn't materialized with builder partners that we've looked at or by, by trying to sell them to builders that wanted to, to build them themselves. Thank you.
Madam Chair, another follow-up for staff.
Commissioner Mooney.
Um, David, is there, in the conversations with the applicant, is there a way that they could have approached this? And change, I mean, I, I understand the P U D is overlaying everything, but could they have come back with something other than a C U P to make this go? Is there, was there another administrative avenue for them to take?
Madam Chair, members of the commission. I mean, the P U D is overlaying this to change, and right now through the planning and development from two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen, um, you know, they were granted reduced setbacks from the side and rear. Um, and, and I understand that, you know, the lots that they're creating through this comply with the R one B zones, but they're still, the houses that have been built there through the conversion are still utilizing those reduced setbacks. Is there another way they could have approached this? Um, and, and complied? I mean, possibly they, they could have possibly done so, but, um, but I don't think, I mean, I don't want to speculate as to what the applicant would be willing to do. Um, but we still would like to see, uh, a higher density here, be that through a single-family with accessory dwelling units, uh, you're built into it or something. But, um, what they're proposing is just straight attach detached, single-family. And that's, the staff cannot support that, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Well, I have a question for the applicant, if you have a moment. So I'm struggling with the difference between the patio and the estate homes, and I think the primary difference is in the lot size. Is that kind of generally correct? Are they about the same size otherwise?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, it's one of the differences is the lot size. The patio homes are significantly smaller lot. The patio homes are also flat lots. Um, they've, they've been graded out flat. The estate lots are, are, they're still in an ungraded fashion, so it requires bringing an architect in and civil engineers and new hillside type, um, civil, uh, applications and things of that nature. So the patio homes are, are pretty, pretty much shovel-ready where the estate homes are not even close.
Sure.
Burnt for a potential buyer.
Sure. And so we're talking like both of them are probably four bed, four bath, uh, maybe five bed, four baths, judging on the size, something, something in that proximity?
I, I think most of the patio homes are roughly three-bedroom, and then the estate homes are four and five plus bedroom, bedroom homes.
So there is kind of a size difference between the two as well?
Yeah, there's a pretty, yeah, the, the average patio home is right around three thousand square feet, and I think our smallest estate is, uh, is over four thousand and, uh, up to five thousand, uh, which is currently built right there.
Okay. And then for these, do I have a couple of follow-ups for you?
Yep.
So for for these two homes, would you say on the, the patio homes, is there kind of the availability to do? Um, kind of an accessory dwelling unit if those, if those, um, owners so chose, or is that kind of something that would only be available to the estate homes?
Yeah, I don't, I, I actually think both lots would have a challenging time to, to build an accessory dwelling unit. Um, we did have an interesting a potential buyer that was under contract on our lots on one of the patio homes that were before you here for, that was proposing a multi-generational unit. It kind of had two living rooms, two kitchens for kind of like a stay-in care, uh, of a, of a parent or a significant other or somebody with disabilities, which we thought was pretty neat. Um, unfortunately, like I said, because we've been unable to get these combined, that deal has since gone away, but I thought that that was a really great concept and use for, for this lot. One of these lots.
Right. Well, thank you. Um, I've got a couple of questions for the city, so Mr. Moser. Um, so for setbacks, it sounds like we are utilizing some reduced setbacks for the P U D process and all of that good stuff. So if we did, you know, say this wasn't a P U D at all, it was a subdivision, it would need lots of variances to work. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the commission. If they wanted to keep the setbacks at the other homes have, have been built at, the side yard setbacks, which are around five feet or so, then they would need a variance. Um, the, the setback of the R one B zone is ten feet for the side yards. Um, or they could just make sure that the buildings comply with the ten-foot side yard setbacks and all the other required setbacks. But, you know, I, given the size of the homes that had been previously built there, I'm not sure if that's what their intention to do, that would cut into the buildable space.
Sure. Understood. And then this is kind of a if off-the-cuff question for you, but are there, so Barber Valley is Wildland Urban Interface and um, hillside in a lot of places. Are there any townhomes built in kind of some of those areas?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, down within the Harris Ranch area, the flatter portion, there are townhomes and condos and multifamily and mix and a, a wide variety of detached, single-family all throughout that, that, that area. Um, they're not necessarily, that flatter isn't, it isn't necessarily in the hillside, but I believe it's still in the wooey.
Okay. Understood. Perfect. Well, that's all the questions that I have. Are there any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mooney.
David, I got, I got a last question. Um, this discussion about multi-gen, would the city, if, if, uh, we, we condition this such that, uh, these townhome lots became patio homes with separate living quarters and attached A D U, basically. Would that satisfy our need for density, um, from a city's perspective?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, from a density perspective, I think so. We would be essentially getting two units on each of those lots, which is what we're going to get with the townhomes. So for each, each lot, uh, single-family, there'd be a, an A D U attached to it, so we'd have two units. Um, that's essentially what we were getting originally. Um, so I think from a density perspective, that would work.
All right. Any other questions for anybody else in the commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seha.
A question for Mr. Moser. So if, if we did look at a, a A D U, a combined A D U, the conditions of approval, you, someone at the city would have to ensure that the designs met that, in fact, it was to, or, you know, a patio home with the A D U attached to it, right?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, that is correct. If you put a condition, like, to approve this and then put a condition of approval stating that the homes going in there had to have an accessory dwelling in it, then we would, then the, this, the building permits as they came in would have to have an accessory dwelling in it, and they would also have to apply ahead of time for the accessory dwelling unit, uh, prior to the building. So we can confirm that that A D U meets the, the lot size or the, the square footages and the other requirements we have for, for accessory dwelling units and meets code.
Thank you.
Great. Well. Seeing no other questions from the commission. Um, I don't have a sign-up sheet, so I don't have anybody who's signed up from public, but um, is there anybody who did not sign up who would like to testify on this item? Please, uh, we'll check in the chambers first. Please come on up. Seeing none, if there, is there anybody virtually who would like to testify? Please, uh, virtually raise your hand. Seeing none. Um, typically we'd move to rebuttal by the applicant. You'd have five minutes. Since there is no public opposition, you can yield your time or you can, uh, address any questions. Please state your name and address.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Tamara Thompson again. Um, thank you for your, for your comments. Um, even though there wasn't public testimony, I'd like to address maybe some of the things that, that you brought up. So I'm going to just go through. Um, as far as, um, the P U D design, um, some of those setbacks were for the townhouses that, um, you know, having a zero setback on, on a, on the interior of, of a townhouse. And then, um, we did get some, we put, we put some of the landscaping in a common lot on the backside of the, of the lots on Bogus Basin Road. So we had some reduced setbacks on the lot itself because the setback was in a common lot, if, if that makes sense to you. So, so those were some of the, the ways that the P U D helped with the development and, and most of that was, was with the hardship of the hillside and the big slopes and the, um, the height of those retaining walls. And then the variance was for the height of those retaining walls. But, but the setbacks were definitely with the P U D on, um, like a rear setback along Bogus Basin Road needed, um, that to be a little bit narrower because the landscaping was in a common lot. If you're following me right there, I just kind of wanted to explain that a little bit more on that. As far as the high-density portion, I mean, we're talking two lots. So we're talking four townhouses or two single-family, and both are single-family. I shouldn't say single-family. Um, two detached units or four attached units. And in this area, those just have not been the market demand. So we're talking, would you like to see four lots remain vacant? Or would you like to see two homes that will go up and serve, um, the, the community and help fulfill a need? Um, the high density in this area is closer to the flats, um, not in the hillside. So if you go closer down to, um, Hill Road, for example, there is, um, mass transit down there. Va- Valley Regional Transit serves up only to, I think the name of that is Park Hill Road, right there where the Bogus Basin's offices are. Um, that is where the higher density is because there are more services and that's where the, um, the, the transit is, the bus services are. Um, some other things, let's see. The A D U, um, and the multi-generational, so they definitely have had interest on this new concept, which I think is a, is, is kind of a cool concept where, you know, kids that go off to college can come back and live in a portion or an aging parent can live there. But to, um, I would like to say, is there a way to encourage it rather than condition it? Just because I feel like if that, that builder was here, has since gone away, I don't, we don't know if they're, they're going to be coming back with this. So having that as a requirement could be difficult and, um, and keep those lots vacant as well. But I would say, um, some sort of a carrot or a, um, to encourage it rather than make it a, a complete condition would be, would be something that, um, that would be desirable. And I guess, could I put my slides up one more time? And I'll just finish with those, uh, we had two last slides, just the highlights of the benefits of the, um, of, of our proposal, um, definitely a new bike repair station along Bogus Basin Road and, um, the approval criteria for you to see that this location is aligned with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the, um, community and the other subdivisions. There's no material negative impacts. The site is large enough to accommodate the proposed use and code-required features. It provides a safe, convenient, and efficient transportation network with the sidewalks and with the private roads. It does not adversely impact municipal providers, and it's not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. It do, does provide two, um, housing types, and we respectfully request your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, the, we will close the public hearing and the item is before the commission. I will entertain the motion. As a reminder, we are the approving body for a C U P twenty-five dash sixteen.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seha.
I move to deny C U P twenty-five dash sixteen.
Do you have a second? No, second?
Second.
All right. I have a second from Commissioner Mooney. Question, Commissioner Seha?
Madam Chair. Um, I, I understand, um, Commissioner Mooney's, um, efforts to try to see how we can make this work. Um, but as the applicant just shared, they wouldn't want a A D U attachment to be part of the condition, right? That I see problematic. Um, I don't believe that it is in the interest of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve an application based on the developer's economic situation. Um, I think that was the case in twenty twenty-three. I don't think anything has changed. Um, you know, if we approve this application, then, and I believe that this is going to open the door to other developers, um, who had applications approved prior to the current modern zoning code, um, that because of the, um, economic situation at hand today, um, they will be before us, asking for modifications to, uh, an application that they brought before us. So for those reasons, I, you know, if the applicant was open to the requirement of an attached A D U, I would be more open. Um, but that doesn't appear to be the case, and so I, I can't support changing it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Seha. Commissioner Mooney, do you have any follow-up?
Nothing there, no.
Okay. Perfect. Commissioner Torres, you look like you're about to.
I agree with everything Commissioner Seha said. Um, I would be open to voting to approve it with the condition being a requirement. Um, but I also understand the, the point that they seem to want it to be an incentive and not a requirement, and I think we do need to stick to the, the density requirements and the And I think we do need to stick to the, the density requirements and the variety of housing uh, uh, options available to meet the city's, um, code and, and goals. So I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Don.
Um, I appreciate, um, Commissioner Seha's argument. And, um, I'm gonna be in support of the motion, even though I was questioning before. But she did a good job of explaining the economic, not using the, the economic, um, items as the reason we make a decision. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess I'll, I'll chime in before we take the vote. I, I struggle with this one. I remember when this one came before us a few years ago or whenever that was. And I, I remember the discussion about that one. And it, it's kind of a balance. Uh, and, and some of these applications where you've got a property that's been vacant for quite some time. You know, is it better to occupy that vacant space now? Receive the benefit from that now or wait for something better? And it's kind of, seems like it's something that we deal with from time to time here. And it's, you know, kind of always the question. And yeah, in this case, I'm, I'm, I'm still struggling. I could be open to a modified ADU. I think that achieves something similar, but I don't know if that fundamentally helps you. And I'm sorry that the.
Did you close the public hearing? I didn't hear that part.
Yes.
If you'd like to ask me a question, I'd be happy to answer something.
But unfortunately, I can't ask, we can't ask you any questions anymore. So I'm sorry about that. I don't think so. No, yeah, I see Crystal shaking her head no. So anyways, you know, and I think last time this was before us, I was struggling with how not terribly different the estates, the estate lots were from the patio homes. They're one, one to two bedrooms different, smaller lots. But fundamentally, I mean, they're still good size, good sized homes on, you know, decent lots. That said, with the bus services, you know, that they stop at Bogus Basin, that, that's a good argument. Uh, I think, you know, higher density right here could incentivize transit to extend that direction. So I think, you know, that could be a benefit as well. So those are kind of my thoughts, my rambling thoughts on that. So if there's no, none of those, um, will the clerk please take the roll? We have, or the vote, we have a motion to deny CUP 25-16.
More?
Yes.
Mooney?
Yes.
Seha?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving right along to item number four. Before we do that, um, is everybody good? Do we need a break? Good, good thumbs up? Cool. Moving right along to number, item number four. This is CAR 25-18 for Todd Campbell Construction at 2911 North Five Mile Road. It's a rezone of approximately 2.2 acres from R1C Residential Traditional to R2 Residential Compact. And Ms. Lockhorn, whenever you're ready.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission. The application before you is a request for a rezone of approximately 2.22 acres located at 2911 North Five Mile Road from R1C Residential Traditional to R2 Residential Compact. The property is located on Five Mile Road, an arterial roadway that contains a level three bikeway. The future land use designation is mixed use in which the R2 zone is allowed. It lies within the Eustick and Five Mile Neighborhood Activity Center in Abut's Coma Park to the north. The surrounding area is comprised of predominantly single-family homes to the southeast and west. North of the park is a multifamily development, which is also zoned R2. The proposed rezone is anticipated to accommodate a 45-unit townhome-style multifamily development, which is subject to design review approval. The conceptual site plan is shown here, but is not part of the rezone application. The site plan will be required to comply with the neighborhood transitional standards to mitigate any potential adverse impacts to the adjacent R1C zoning. The findings of approval for rezones are summarized on your screen. As stated within the project report, the rezone meets all of the findings. Three public comments were received in the form of late correspondence. These testimonies expressed opposition to the proposed rezone. Their concerns are listed on your screen. The subject application before you today is to rezone the property from R1C to R2 and is focused on whether this land use change is appropriate based on the findings outlined in the development code. Due to the characteristics of the site, surrounding area and its location within the Neighborhood Activity Center, this is an area where it is expected to see the R2 zone, which provides a transitional zone between mixed use typically found along arterial and/or collector roadways and lower density residential zones. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. And next up, we will hear from the applicant. The applicant present. If you'll come up and state your name and address and you'll have 10 minutes.
Thanks. My name's Becky Isagary. My address is 4818 West Camas Street, Boise, Idaho, 83712. So good evening. I'm here to present a rezone application for a two-acre parcel located on Five Mile, about a quarter mile south of Eustick. We are requesting a rezone from R1C to R2 to support future development that's consistent with the City of Boise's comprehensive plan and infill objectives. The subject parcel is located within a quarter mile radius of the Five Mile and Eustick Activity Center. This area already functions as a designated mixed-use hub that brings together grocery, retail, restaurants, financial services, schools, park, and a planned pathway that'll run north, uh, south along that Settlers Canal. The area is well-connected by public transit with two bus stops at the intersection, making the site both highly accessible and walkable to daily services. The property is located just 0.2 miles, um, south of the transit line and is surrounded by everyday goods and services within walking or biking distance. The area already functions as a vibrant mixed-use environment. There are multiple commercial destinations within 0.2 miles of the site. And the neighborhood is both pedestrian-friendly and highly bikeable. I can confirm this, um, for my own daily bike commute, um, as I bike down both Eustick and Five Mile, where I regularly see residents walking, um, to nearby businesses, waiting at the two bus stops or just walking along that, uh, Settlers, uh, canal. In addition, the site directly borders Comba Park to the north. This park has a, a beautiful community garden, a little play area for the kids and tons of space just to hang out in. This, um, high level of activity underlines why an R2 zone designation makes sense for the subject parcel. The comprehensive plan directs growth towards activity centers and corridors by co, uh, concentrating housing, jobs and services and walkable compact areas while discouraging large lot, low-density development. It prioritizes compact infill and diverse, um, housing choices. Rezoning from R1C to R2 directly supports these goals by moving beyond exclusively lower-density housing and introducing a greater flexibility for more housing options in this area. This request aligns with the city's long-term vision for sustainable, inclusive neighborhoods where everyone can live, work and feel connected. So here's the current zoning map. The subject parcel lies within the activity zone and directly across from a public park, making it better suited for an R2 zoning designation. Under the existing R1C zone, the site is limited to a maximum of 27 units, a low-density pattern that does not align with the purpose of an activity zone. By allowing more residents in this area, an R2 zone would help nearby businesses thrive and would pub, strengthen that public transit, um, system by increasing demand, making it easier for residents to access jobs and other daily destinations. Increasing residential density and activity centers strengthens local businesses, drives transit use and creates more sustainable community. This project meets the approval criteria by, um, responding to changed conditions in the area and aligning with the comprehensive plan, which calls for high density within activity zones, which strengthens alternative modes of transportation and businesses in the area. The proposed R2 zone provides attainable housing, supports a healthier and more connected community and places residents near parks, schools and transit. The density is complementary and compatible with the surrounding uses. And the rezone is fully consistent with the city's long-term vision for sustainable mixed-use neighborhoods. Thanks, Solstan, for questions.
Thank you. And before we get into questions, is there anyone representing the Neighborhood Association? And this is the West Valley Neighborhood Association. Person online? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Moving on, are there any questions from the Commission? Hold on, people consider unless Commissioner Mooney has one?
No, sure.
Commissioner Mooney?
The, uh, question for staff. Madison, the, uh, can you talk about the neighborhood transition standards and how this will, uh, impact, uh, the applicant as we go, if a rezone is approved?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, um, on your screen is how the neighborhood transition standards in a moment, um, would be required. So the building height, so neighborhood transition standards can relate to the setbacks and building height step down. So when a property, like an R2 zone property is abutting, an R1C property, it cannot, and it exceeds 35 feet. Um, any portion of the building height between 35 feet and 45 feet needs to be set back an additional 20 feet from that required setback of this R2 zone. As shown on your screen as well.
And Madison, might I add, this, this project, um, the, the concept drawing that you pulled up, the building height of those, um, aren't going to exceed that 35 feet.
Yeah, sure. Another question for staff. So a lot of the, the public opposition in written testimony, it talks about height and, uh, vehicular traffic, density, um, basketball court. All those things are not really under our purview in, in this rezone application. Is that, the density is obviously, because that's a rezone. But basketball court siding and things like that are not our purview.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, that is correct. The application is only about the land use designation, not necessarily the type of use being proposed on the site.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mooney? Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Torres.
My question is for staff. We've seen this come up a few times and I see it in some of the, I, I see it in the late correspondence. It might've been in the original packet as well. The concerns about views. That is not something we as a body can really consider. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, that is correct.
All right, so I'll follow up kind of to Commissioner Torres' line of questioning. So this is only a rezone. Who knows what it will actually end up looking like? But if it does look like what we're, you know, the, the site plan that we're looking at in this application, is it, its next stop is design review?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, yes, design review application is required for this, um, proposed use.
And that's a, that's a hearing level. It's a hearing level design review? It's kind of in that weird, it's, it's like 45 units, is it?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we believe it's an admin review for that design review application, but I can confirm.
Perfect, okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Torres.
Kind of another related question. I know this came up during other hearings we've had recently. And I know it's probably not really anything we can consider. Well, I take that back, we can consider it to an extent. But does the city have any evidence that increased density increases crime in a community? Um, obviously, there's looking at it two different ways, per capita and individual incidents. And anytime you add more people to a situation, you might get a few more incidents. But can you clarify if the city has any data in that regard?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, we do not, um, look at that when these applications for rezone are before us for review.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Torres, um, all of our applications are transmitted to Boise PD and so they do have the opportunity to comment on if that is something that they believe is a risk.
Thank you.
I have one last follow-up question. So if I'm looking at the setback standards from R1B, R1C, it looks like, I mean, the biggest one that really I'm seeing is the building height maximum. I'm seeing an R1C, three stories not to exceed 40 feet. And R1, and R2, it's four stories not to exceed 45 feet. And there's some other smaller ones, I think, setback at the front and then the remainder of the structure is different. That doesn't really apply to this R1C adjacent area. So I'll kind of glaze over that one. But really, you know, dimensionally, I'm seeing the biggest difference being that building height. But then there's that overlay for 35 feet. So if I, if I kind of understand correctly, you could actually build something taller in the R1C zone than you could in this R2 adjacent to R1C. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, depending on if you're building it to that setback line, then yes. Your line of reasoning is correct.
So if you just built it to the setback adjacent to R1C as an R2, it would actually be shorter than if it was at the setback in an R1C?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, that is correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That's all the questions that I have. And if that's all the questions from the Commission, we will go to the signup sheet. I've got two people signed up and I'm really sorry. Becky? That's you? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. And then the next one is Brady Young? Bradley, sorry. Come on up and if you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Uh, Bradley Young, 10654 West Excalibur Street, Boise, 83713. Well, it doesn't look to me like, um, the neighborhood concerns is under the purview of this esteemed body. Uh, you're just gonna ignore all of that stuff. And, uh, but I would like to state that I do support housing in Boise, particularly, uh, affordable housing. So as the developer stated, there can currently be 27 units placed on this property. And I believe there is an inclusionary element in those 27 units, uh, which would encourage the developer to, to put some affordable housing in there. These are all proposed for market rate rentals. And the other thing I'd like to point out is with the current zoning, you have single-family homes, which support a much larger family size or housing number of people being housed than one and two-bedroom little crammed-in apartments that they're proposing to build. So with the zoning change, the, uh, the increase of number of people being housed would be minimal. And there's a lot of negative impact to the neighborhood from this project. And I don't see the benefits from it. Especially with the, uh, affordable housing issue. So that's what I've got to say.
Well, thank you very much. All right, and that's all for our signup sheet. So if there's any- So if there's anybody in person who would like to testify, please come on up. Seeing, okay, please. And if you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Laura Bloom. My address is one zero five two zero West Excalibur, Boise, eight three seven zero four. I think my biggest concern with forty-five units in that area, when you go down Five Mile, there is a median, for lack of a better word, I don't know what it's called, where people will pull into turn because it's quite a busy street. People are turning, making left-hand turns into the neighborhoods. Right now, I turn onto Lancelot and the apartment complex that is closer on the other side of the street, that's closer to you, stick. There, there are people that are pulling into that center turn lane far before you even would turn into my neighborhood. There are times, there are two people trying to go in the same spot into two different directions, turning right or, you know, turning left each way, but north or, I guess, east or west. And the addition of forty-five units and the number of cars that that would entail going into that process that's already happening, just seems like recipe for a disaster to me. I don't understand how traffic wouldn't be part of safety and zoning on, had deciding to allow such high density. So that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anybody else in person who would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, we will go to online. If there's anybody online who would like to testify on this item, please virtually raise your hand. Being none.
Madam Chair, we've got Steve Redmond.
Do we, okay, there we go. Steve Redmond, can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect, if you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Steve Redmond, one zero seven seven nine West Excalibur Street, Boise, eight three seven one three. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We've lived at that address for the last thirty-nine years, seen the area grow and change and find it a pleasant and compatible area. Tonight, I'm speaking out against the proposed rezoning application, C A R twenty-five eighteen. Three months ago, we attended a meeting hosted by the developer. All neighborhood feedback was overwhelmingly against the proposed development as being too many, too tall and too close. Please see my submitted written objections about these points for further detail. Given how little has changed since that meeting, I believe the developer's final implementation will be the same as what they propose today. How intrusive will these multiple large buildings be to our adjoining neighborhood? The answer is very intrusive. Please see page one, picture number one, which I believe that you can see on your screen. This picture shows two views of a three-story, thirty-eight-foot-tall townhouses located at Eustick and Milwaukee. The developer's current concept proposes similar three-story townhouses. The townhouse buildings in those pictures don't look that intrusive when seen from a distance and with significant open buffer space. But how would those building heights be and location fit at the proposed development site? For that answer, we need to go three-dimensional. So if you could switch to the next one, thank you. This picture shows a utility pole near the development property's southeast corner. The indicated cross arm is approximately thirty-five feet off the ground, which is about the height as the proposed townhouse building. Let's go to the next picture, please. This picture shit looks west along the development's southern property line. The indicated shed window's right-hand edge is approximately ten feet from the southern property border. The southern ends of the two proposed buildings would be located along that line. Hopefully, you can now better appreciate the concerns raised by our Excalibur Street neighborhood about the proposed building's sheer size, height and placement. My question to you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, is this. How would you like to step outside your back door and be faced with a looming thirty-six-foot-tall building only ten feet from your property line? I am generally in favor of growth and affordable housing, provided they are done in a way that integrates with the existing community and infrastructure. The proposed development does not, in my opinion, take into account the too many, too tall and too close negative impacts to our adjacent established neighborhood. In conclusion, I object to the rezoning change and I encourage you to deny the developer's rezoning application. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else online who would like to testify and opposite, or to testify on this topic? I see Gary Tubbs. All right, Gary, can you, can you hear us? Maybe?
Tubbs, you were able to unmute at this time?
It was, I think I'm unmuted now, am I?
You are. If you will state your name and address, you will have three minutes.
I, my name is Gary Tubbs. I live at one oh seven five seven West Excalibur Street. I've been here for thirty-two years. I am against this rezoning and I know of at least five of six neighbors that are against it, one of which just didn't think it would affect her. She didn't express positive or negative feeling. My concerns are the density. The existing zoning allows for significantly increased residential housing from one household with, that is on the existing property up to twenty-seven. This will have impacts on traffic on Five Mile Road with neighborhood noise, visual aesthetics, use of neighborhood facilities, including Comba Park, nearby schools, both pedestrian and automobile traffic at the very busy intersection of Five Mile and Eustick Roads and the single vehicular entry. Developers' comments are, are just proposals. We don't know what we will finally end up with. As far as increased density, this does allow for increased density with the existing zoning. As far as the transition from high density and low density, we have a number of apartments at the intersection of Five Mile and Eustick, as well as down at Five Mile and Fairview Road. The traffic gets backed up on Five Mile Road during the rush hour, especially at five P M. Sometimes we cannot make a left-hand turn out of our street. And so we find traffic parked right in front of our street. They, those are my major concerns. It appears to me that the, oh, we also have manufactured housing on the south side of us, so that is high density. It appears to me that the reason for this rezoning is to maximize return on investment. And although such rezoning does address the concerns of adequate housing in the area, I think the additional social and logistical problems created by the future problems that can, are created will cause future problems that can be mitigated now. I request that you retain the current zoning. And I, I think, I don't know how much time I have left. Some of my other concerns, well, I guess that really sums it up.
Perfect, well, thank you very much. Right, is there anybody else online who would like to testify on this item? Please raise your hand. Just a couple more seconds, okay. Seeing none, and one last call in person, seeing none. We will now hear from the applicant. If you would like rebuttal, you have five minutes.
I'd like to state, thank everybody for their comments. So I just want to reiterate that this application is just for a rezone only. We are intending to go forth with the, the com, the, the, the plan that was submitted. But I just, I just want to just reiterate that this is just for a rezone. These, these homes, the density from this rezone will help support the commercial. It'll help support the transit in the area. The, the, the thing is, is like staff confirmed earlier as far as the height goes. In an R one C zone, we can still build thirty-five feet, which is what we're proposing in this concept plan. So there will be no height difference between the R one C and then what we're proposing. And as, as, as for traffic, both Eustick and Five Mile are both collectors, they're meant to handle that traffic. There are bike lanes on both sides. There's sidewalks, it's very pedestrian-friendly. Like I said, I can, I can confirm that as I bike that daily. Around the, you know, five o'clock and at seven-thirty in the morning. So I ask that you just consider the rezone portion only, and I can see a person questions.
Perfect, well, thank you very much. No more questions at this point. So we will close the hearing and render a decision. So as a reminder, we are the recommending body for this rezone. Do I have a motion?
Madam. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Torres.
I recommend, I, I move that we recommend approval of C A R, C A R twenty-five dash eighteen with all the terms and conditions of the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Torres and a second by Commissioner Seha. Commissioner Torres, do you have any discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I hear the concerns about the density and I hear the other concerns that have been expressed about traffic. As we discussed when it came to the setbacks, the R one C zone right now allows the, the, the height that is a concern, whether we change the zoning or not, and in some cases, it would actually be closer with this, with your current zoning. I, I do, I am convinced by the arguments both of staff and the applicant that this does meet the goals in the comprehensive plan as far as increasing housing. This is along transit corridors, it is along major thoroughfares, and it does add additional housing at a time, but we definitely need more of that. I would encourage the neighbors to, to express their traffic concerns to A C H D and work with them on potential traffic calming measures. If what's, what's there now is not, is not satisfactory as far as their concerns about safety go, but I, I do think this is a good project and, and I'm sorry, a good rezone and should move forward. And it's worth noting that anything that is developed there would have to either go through the standard planning process and may, depending on what it is, require hearings in the future anyway, at which point you could weigh in on those with any concerns you have about anything that would, were to be proposed for that development. And with that, I will, like I said, I move that we approve it, recommend approval, sorry.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Torres, Commissioner Seha.
Madam Chair, I have nothing to add.
All right, any comments over here?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mooney.
Yeah, I'd like, like to just kind of like the fact that as, as appointed officials, we were asked by the elected officials, who you all elect, to make decisions like this in accordance with the code. And the code is pretty clear that what the elected officials elected by you said is they wanted density in that community activity centers. And so this is in a community activity center and, and the applicant wants a rezone to basically provide more housing and energize that community activity center. And so we're really, our hands are tied as volunteer-appointed officials to do what the code says. So if you don't like what happened, then that's because you didn't participate in the process that we got, that, that got us to here. So that's my two cents.
Perfect, thank you very much, Commissioner Mooney. No, you're good, okay. So I guess I'll, I'll chime in, I'm, I'll be in support of the motion as well. I think it, it makes sense to add higher density at this location or to rezone to an R two at this location. You're directly across from a park, you're, you know, half a block from grocery stores and, and other amenities and things like that. And I think it, it makes a lot of sense. You know, and the compatibility with transition standards and other items, you know, I think really the height is the biggest difference outside of the density. The height is the biggest difference between, you know, the R one C and the R two. And, and honestly, keeping this project as an R one C, you could build something taller closer to the property line. So potentially, in terms of a height, kind of volumetric standpoint, this, an R two adjacent to the R one is more restricted, just from a volumetric standpoint. I do agree with, this isn't part of the rezone, but I do agree with the basketball courts adjacent to the property that I, I don't disagree with, with that, that's something that I might like to see changed, but obviously not part of this rezone. And then, yeah, I'd like to echo comments about talking to A C H D about the traffic concerns, about the turn lanes, safety concerns, anything on Five Mile that was discussed. Well, it's not part of this item. You know, it's, it's always good to kind of bring that to their attention and just talk to them about it. And again, traffic is considered typically in, in applications. We do receive A C H D staff reports about specific items specifically addressing the project at hand. So that would be part of whatever future staff report, whatever future project happens. And then the traffic generated would be part of that as well. So if there's no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll? And as a reminder, we have a motion to approve, or a motion to recommend approval of C A R twenty-five dash eighteen. More?
Yes.
Mooney?
Yes.
Seha?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Dom?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Before we move on, I'll kind of check in, make sure everybody's good to move on, good. All right, moving on to item number five. That's S U B twenty-four dash twelve Filbert Cabana subdivision. That's at seventeen seventy South Maple Grove Road. It's a preliminary and final plat for a residential subdivision comprised of one buildable lot and the dedication of right-of-way on six point one two acres and an R two A I O residential compact with an airport influence area overlay zone. Ms. Lyle, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The item before you is S U B twenty-four twelve. This is a preliminary plat, our preliminary and final plat comprised of one buildable lot and the dedication of right-of-way on six point one two acres located at seventeen seventy Maple Grove Road and an R two A I O zone. The site may look familiar as it was before this body in July of twenty twenty-four for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use from suburban to compact, a rezone from A one to R two and a C U P to exceed the five-unit-per-acre maximum density of the B one airport influence area. Those applications were subsequently approved by city council. Additionally, a designer view approval for one hundred and sixty-two units was approved, as well as a property line adjustment as shown on the screen. The current subdivision will dedicate the Mohican ride, or roadway extension to A C H D and the condition of approval will require some of the remaining right-of-way to be vacated. As included in your late correspondence packet, condition number three was modified to clarify that the vacation must be finalized before the issuance of building permits for lot one, but that construction can take place on the western side of the new roadway prior to the vacation as that parcel already has street frontage and utility access from Maple Grove Road. As outlined in the project report, all tree mitigation requirements are being met. The applicant is fulfilling the condition of the C U P to provide a ten-foot-wide east-west pedestrian pathway through the site as shown in green on your screen. A condition of approval will require the public pathway easement to be recorded prior to the issuance of building permits. Public comment was submitted in opposition to the project with concerns mainly stemming from increased traffic within the surrounding neighborhood due to the connection of Vincent Street and Mediterranean Court, as well as the dilapidated nature of Vincent Street. However, the most direct access and route to the property is from Maple Grove Road and A C H D has not indicated there are any concerns with the proposed roadway extension and traffic impacts. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Lyle. Next, we have, we'll hear from the applicant. If you'll come on up, state your name and address, you'll have ten minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Stephanie Hopkins, Oakham Engineering. Our address is five seven two five North Discovery Way in Boise. I'm here on behalf of Hawkins tonight to propose the Filbert Cabana subdivision, which is a combined preliminary and final plat. Staff did a wonderful job summing, summarizing our request and going through the history of the projects. I'll try to keep my presentation kind of pithy. So we're requesting a combined preliminary and final plat primarily for dedication of right-of-way, public right-of-way to A C H D. There are two There are two existing legal parcels now, um, divided by that blue line in the middle there that would allow for building permits to be pulled as the site is currently, if that right of way was not being dedicated. So that's the nature of our request tonight and we're asking for your recommendation of approval to city council on that. The overall site is about six acres and the preliminary and final plat is about two acres on the east part of the development. So Jesse covered the history of this project while, um, Hawkins has coordinated extensively with the city and other reviewing agencies to make sure they're complying with all the conditions of approval and everything that happened throughout the, the rezone and the design review, um, and conditionally use permit approvals. So, um, the conditionally use permit as well as the comprehensive plan and rezone occurred last year and they just recently received design review approval for a hundred and sixty-two multifamily units within eight residential buildings. They've actually adjusted the orientation of those buildings to be less impactful to adjacent developments. Um, and that designer you actually included a clubhouse and pool and some other amenities as mentioned by Jesse. So the site plan is to give you a visual for what is planned. Uh, as mentioned, there are eight buildings. Uh, there are around two hundred and fifty plus parking stalls for vehicles and around three hundred, uh, bicycle parking stalls. There'd be a really great east west pedestrian connection, uh, going through the site. And then Mohican is the proposed public right of way that will connect Vincent Street, which is currently uh, in a cul-de-sac, a temporary cul-de-sac and, uh, the stubbed street that connects from Mediterranean to the south. Both of those streets were stubbed with the intention of connecting. And so, uh, that's where this public street connection is coming from. Is, has been approved by A C H D and, um, as recommended by the city. So uh, this is just an overview of everything that was included within, uh, the development that you all reviewed and, um, was approved by city council. So this project will be phased. Um, Hawkins is coordinated with staff on this. And as I mentioned, they have two existing parcels now, um, in order to be able to dedicate the right of way though, that we need to plat the property. So there was a lot line that, um, staff showed on their graphic that's right in the middle of what is going to be considered phase one that was shifted to the east. So it's shifted just on, um, the west side of the right of way so that we can, or so that Hawkins can pull building permits on phase one and start construction of that side of the development. Concurrently, they've submitted an application to A C H D to exchange the right of way so that, um, they will be, let me show you this slide. So they'll be exchanging the right of way with A C H D. It's about point three five acres. It's going to be dedicated with Mohican. In exchange for the temporary cul-de-sac that's shown in orange there, which is about twelve hundred square feet. So that process takes a few months and A C H D won't review it until they have a decision from the city typically. So that's submitted to them. It's in their, under the review and it'll be going to hearing soon. Uh, we don't anticipate any real discussion there. It's, it'll be pretty straightforward to them. They want that public street to be connected and the right of way that's currently located there won't be used. Uh, and it does intersect with a building that's planned within the second phase of the development. So the second phase of the development is shown in pink here, and that's what we are plotting or proposing to plat. That'll be lot one, block one, um, Filbert Cabana subdivision. So, uh, that includes, or I think it's thirty-eight units and, uh, phase one is a hundred and twenty-four. So we're really appreciative of staff's, uh, coordination on this project and, um, in agreement with the staff report and conditions of approval. And, uh, super excited to keep it going and to keep working with staff. So, um, I can stand for any questions if you have them.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Before we get to questions, we'll check in with the neighborhood association. I've got next sheet. South Cole Neighborhood Association. I don't see her in person and I don't think I saw her name on line. Nope. Okay. With that, we will move to questions from the commission. Any questions? None so far? Okay. Well, I've got a couple. So, all right, go ahead. Commissioner Mooney.
I've got a background question that's not really related to the sub and our discussion. But when this was before last couple of times, I just wanted to check and see what, what's the city status on the airport influence overlay and how we're going to tackle that in the future, because that was really the underlying issue with, uh, this application from a year ago. Are we, are we tackling that? Because the code was clear that the density problems that we had with this application that then went to city council on appeal were passed.
Madam Commissioner.
So the, the question, the question is, the question is, are we tackling the disconnect between, the code was very clear about density in the airport influence overlay? And we denied this when we saw it a year ago. And it's not related. So this is going forward. So this is just a question for the record about, are we really solving the underlying issue with the airport influence overlay and density housing issues?
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, uh, that's a good question. And that's something that is, uh, being discussed further. However, there is no change at this time to that section of code. There'll be more information and studies needed.
Well, small, everybody kind of considers, I've got a couple of questions. I think the, the biggest one, there's, as, as you've pointed out, there's a lot of applications associated with this one. But the C U P is approved. The rezone was approved, the comprehensive plan amendment was approved. So fundamentally, I think if I understand correctly, the site plan is approved and now we're just taking care of kind of the, the subdivision and the plat. So the discussion really isn't where this road is, is heading. It's not really, you know, what's being built here, the density of it. It's just kind of these lines and maybe, you know, attached versus detached sidewalks and things like that.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that's correct. Um, the design review approval essentially set the site plan as is, uh, in conjunction with A C H D approval of relocating the roadway to its proposed position.
Perfect. And so there's no variance requests in detached or requesting attached sidewalks. We're not requesting any alternative setbacks and nothing like that.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, uh, that's correct. We're meeting all of the landscaping requirements of development code. The sidewalks proposed are detached. Um, they're meeting the condition of approval to provide that ten foot east west pathway. Uh, so really this is just about the roadway lines essentially.
Thank you. And I don't see any other questions. So with that, um, I will go to, it looks like there is not a sign up sheet. So if there's anybody in person who would like to come on up, uh, and if you'll state your name and your address, you'll have three minutes.
So, um, I guess as preface to see if this is allowed.
Raise the, if you'll raise the mic up just a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
I have, this is not written testimony. These are diagrams that I produce to help illustrate my point. Can I, can I give these to you guys just to look at? These are not written testimony.
Sure.
Just pretty pictures to explain my point.
Understood. Unfortunately, we can't accept stuff at this point.
Can I point?
You can, you can describe it to us and point and all that good stuff, I think. Yeah. Okay. But we're just unable to accept it.
Recommend to the, um, public to, that this could be submitted for consideration for the council also, but not for tonight.
When?
After this.
After this. I will submit after. I'll, I'll get a whole, all right. Uh, my name is Max Van Eris. I live at eight nine five two West Mediterranean Court. So the aid that you guys can't look at, but you might be able to see from there. I, I, so, so all the properties on the north side Mediterranean port on the south side of the proper, the development question. Um, they all have a downward slope. Everything between Maple Grove and Mohican all has a downward slope that drains into a open channel irrigation ditch, stream, a creek, whatever. I mean, it, 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 into this channel. This was all good and dandy back in the legacy code when there's only supposed to be three units per acre in this area. Obviously in the new code, it was five and now we've abandoned that. We're at twenty-eight. So the problem that I have with it, amongst others, but the, the problem that I was trying to point out is currently the, the fence that they have at the south end of the property is supposed to be six feet tall. That's the top, uh, as much as we're allowed to do per code. Well, at a six foot tall fence, there, the setback of the building from that, that fence is fifteen feet. You have a perfect view from, uh, the outside of the building from where they are currently proposing to put the sidewalks per the plat that they have that you can't really see. It's tiny. But where, where they're proposing to put the fence, um, you can see the bottom, you can see underneath of my window. You can see underneath the window that goes into the bedrooms of my house for the, you know, people that are sleeping in there, right? So my proposal, what I'm asking is that instead of a six foot fence, you go to a eight foot fence at that slope. I think this is a unique, uh, situation because there's so much more development that's going on here and because every property in that section has a downward slope, a slope that you can go out and measure and, and I did, um, with laser level, I got these elevations. If we were to increase the height of the fence by two feet, which this would be the first concession that the developers made to the residents that was originally a neighborhood comment. But if we were to raise that fence by two feet from six to eight, assuming that there's a two percent, um, grade for watershed at the development, assuming that it's slightly above, if not level with existing grade. Um, that would mean that they would have to go back to almost thirty feet off the fence to see halfway through the window. That is in the second stall of, that's in the second stall of the, uh, of the parking structure. There's the two E Vs that they have. Uh, I, I give up. Now, there's two E V stalls that they have as on the very outside of, at least where my property is. Um, you'd have to be in the middle of that to see into my window and I think thirty feet is probably far enough off the fence to not look into my home. Um, so that's the, the request. Um, again, this is all stems because it's currently draining into an open channel ditch into a, into a little creek. Um, so I, I think this is a unique situation, um, something that's different, but I'll, I'll work with staff to get that finalized and signed, all that.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else in person who would like to testify on this item tonight? Seeing none in person. Is there anybody online who would like to testify on this item tonight? I see you're still shaking your head. Okay. Perfect. Well, seeing no more who would like to testify, we will, now move back to the applicant. If you'd like to rebut, you have five minutes. Yep. Yeah, no testimony online. All right. You have five minutes. If you'll state your name and address again.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Um, I was just speaking with our client and I think, um, Max's concerns are valid. I think that there are possibly some things we could do to work with him a little bit on mitigating his concerns. But it, I, without seeing where his property is exactly and knowing exactly what's going on with the property lines, it'll be challenging, right? So we won't have answers on that today, but, uh, maybe we could speak with them after this meeting and, and come to city council with some, some potential ideas. I also don't, I don't know that an eight foot fence is permitted in residential districts. Okay. So that might answer, um, that part of it anyhow. Um, other than that, I think, um, all the questions have been answered. We're excited about this project and I can stand for further questions if you have any.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. And I think, um, questions are over at this point. So we will close the public hearing and render a decision. And as a reminder, split sheets. We are the recommending body for S U B twenty-four dash twelve.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mooney.
I recommend, we recommend approval to city council of sub twenty-four twelve for all the terms, with all the terms and conditions in the staff report with the condition number three changed as follows in the staff report. The portion of the Vincent Street right of way located within lot one must be vacated prior to the submittal of building permits within lot one. Permits for the western portion of the project, phase one may be submitted prior to the vacation.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank God, Commissioner Don. Perfect. Well, I have a motion with modified condition number three. Modified condition number three and a second by Commissioner Mooney and a second by Commissioner Don. Commissioner Mooney?
Nothing to add from the staff report. Uh, thanks Jesse for, uh, I, I really liked the, her, uh, format on, on the project report where the opening reason for decision was, uh, real straightforward. Not a whole lot of, uh, extra language. It was just concise, plain language summary of the entire application, uh, for our review. And a note to Net Levity, Mr. Ethan's, uh, sign off on his letter, the applicant's letter, yours and arterial density will live in.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Mooney. Um, Commissioner Don, do you have any follow up?
No, thank you.
Any other comments on the motion? No comments? Perfect. Well, I'll, I'll chime in. Um, you know, I, I agree with Commissioner Mooney. It's, it's pretty narrow. The scope that we're really looking at in this specific application. However, appreciate your comments about the, the grade change and that's, you know, can be difficult to handle, especially when you do have a maximum six foot fence height. Um, and then also appreciate the applicant's willingness to, to look at that at this point. It does, from the landscape plan, appear that there's some pretty heavy landscaping along that side. So maybe that would help alleviate your concerns if that heavy landscaping is kind of taking care of some of those vision areas. But otherwise, you know, we're really looking at that street connection and some of those other items that are mentioned in the staff report. So if there's no other comments, um, will the clerk please call the roll? And as a reminder, we are, is the motion for to recommend approval, uh, recommend, yeah. Make a recommendation of approval for S U B twenty-four dash twelve with the modified condition number three as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
More?
Yes.
Mooney?
Yes.
Seha?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Dom?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. And before we move on, are we still good? Do we need a break? Need a break? All right. Let's take a five minute break. Let's take a five minute break and maybe we'll be back at seven fifty-five. It's a little bit over five minutes. All right. I think we've got everybody back. Okay. So since we've got everybody back, we'll start back in at, it's gonna take me a while to kind of walk through, so I'll give you a couple of extra minutes. Uh, C V A, item number six, it's C V A twenty-five dash forty-one for Centurion Engineers, Inc. Uh, twenty-one oh six North Cribben Street. Variances to D V A from the streetscape standards, access and connectivity requirements on point nine nine acres and R one C residential traditional zone. And S U B twenty-four dash fifty-four for Verbonc, for, for bank subdivision. Um, this was deferred from July fourteenth. It's also at twenty-one oh six Cribben Street. It's preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of two buildable lots on point nine nine acres and R one C residential traditional zone. And Ms. Lyle, whenever you're ready.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the item before you is S U B twenty-four fifty-four and C V A twenty-five forty-one. As you said, this is a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of two buildable lots on zero point nine nine acres located at twenty-one oh six North Cribben Street in an R one C zone. A variance to D V A from the streetscape standards and the access and connectivity requirements is also included. The proposal meets all dimensional standards of the development code and conditions of approval will require all structures to meet the setback requirements of the, of the development code as well. As such, the existing structures must either be removed or relocated that are currently within the rear setback. An additional condition will require that the final plat includes recorded easement for the existing irrigation line. The applicant is also requesting a variance to provide attached sidewalk rather than detach as required by the development code. The original submittal materials show the detached sidewalk. However, the applicant contends that installing detached sidewalk would negatively impact the surrounding area if the neighborhood redevelops as trees on other properties would have to be removed to accommodate a detached sidewalk. However, variances must consider hardships with the property itself and no arborist report or tree information was submitted. While there is attached sidewalk south of the subject property, as seen in yellow on the screen, that sidewalk was installed under a previous development code and previous approvals on other properties do not set a precedent for variances. Late correspondence was received in support of the variance citing the same concerns of future impacts to offsite trees if detached sidewalk should be installed throughout the neighborhood in the presence of attached sidewalk to the south. Again, no information on tree health has been provided and potential future offsite impacts are not. and potential future offsite impacts are not a hardship with the site itself. And the sidewalk to the south was installed under a previous development code. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the subdivision and denial of the variance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Jesse. Uh, next, we will hear from the applicant. You'll come on up and state your name and address and you'll have ten minutes.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is David Crawford. Centurion Engineers, two three two three South Vista Avenue, Boise. Um, my presentation is going to be very short as the owners of the property wish to speak on this, but I think we uh, went over in our narrative, kind of the conditions that we found in there, the hardship conditions and the other evidence and support of the variants. Um, I would say in general scope that this was part of an original platted subdivision from nineteen fifty nine. It platted an abnormally narrow right away. It put, uh, it was, it exists as forty feet of right away where a normal subdivision even in the past would have been fifty. So it put on a collision course of development being encroaching closer to where the street center line was than normal. So uh, with that, I'll introduce Mark and Jeannie Verbanic.
If you'll come up and state your name and address as well.
My name is Mark Verbannick. I live at twenty one oh six North Cribben Street in Boise.
If you can pull the mic down just a hair. Thank you. We just want to make sure everybody online can hear you.
And I would like to kind of explain a little bit about this particular residential area. It's a very old area. As uh, David mentioned, it was built in nineteen fifty nine. The road we live on has no sidewalks at all, except for one that was established in two thousand seventeen when a property was split. And that particular sidewalk is directly attached with a curb to Cribben Street currently. Um, all the people that live in that particular area walk on the street regularly because there are no sidewalks to use. So our request for variance to have an attached sidewalk would align with the existing sidewalk on the southeast side of Cribben Street currently. We think that that would look more normal. And furthermore, it seems odd that we would have to put a eight foot planter strip which would destroy uh, living trees, uh, Mugo pines. And also, we we feel it's it's probably unnecessary for enhancing pedestrian safety. Um, since our sidewalk would only be two hundred feet long and then end, pedestrians would then have to be forced onto a curb which is gravel currently or on the street itself. So we feel that a sidewalk that is directly attached would make it uh, pretty consistent with what already is established. Now, the staff reports suggested that if they granted us a variance, it would set a precedent for future development, which would then not have to do the a detached sidewalk. I would propose that there are no other properties on Cribben Street on either side, west or east that will ever develop a sidewalk for any reason because their properties are too small to split. So we feel that it would be easier just to conform with the existing sidewalk and directly attach ours so that is consistent with the way the streets laid out. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next, if you'll also state your name and address.
Uh, I'm Janine Verbanic. I live at twenty one oh six North Cribben Street. Um, and so I would like to provide a little bit more information um, about the hardship that this particular product or for this particular project. So the staff report indicated that we didn't have enough evidence of undue hardship. So I would like to provide a little bit more clarity. Um, so this uh, so not only would this small eastern red bud have to be removed, that's one that we just planted a couple of years ago, but large Mugo pines marked a shrub on the plan measuring seventeen and a half feet by nine feet by six and a half feet. So they're quite large shrubs. Um, must also be removed. And so we're trying to understand why would we destroy healthy shrubs when um, and then add a planters strip back. It doesn't, doesn't make sense. Um, information um, shows that the construction of the detached sidewalk would be within fifteen feet of our fifty foot tall sixty year old silver maple tree. The circumference of that trunk is thirteen and a half feet diameter, four point three feet. Um, so it's not tiny tree. Um, and so we believe that the impact of constructing a detached sidewalk would have on this particular type of tree. I've done some research on it. Um, and and what I came up with was that um, installing a sidewalk within fifteen feet of a sixty year old silver maple would likely harm the tree. Silver maples are an aggressive, shallow and wide spreading root system and are known to crack and lift pavement, sidewalks and foundations. The construction process in itself would cause significant damage to the tree through root cutting, um, oxygen deprivation, structural instability and decline in depth. So the first one on root cutting, to install the sidewalk, deep trenches are dug and ground is prepared, which involves severing high percentage of the tree's majoral structural and feeder roots in the area. An Iowa State University Extension recommends recommends cut against cutting roots larger than two inches in diameter when a sidewalk is placed within one point five to three times the diameter of the tree's trunk. Damage is highly probable. Uh, oxygen deprivation, the tree truth, tree roots need access to oxygen paving over the root root system with concrete compacts the soil and restricts water and oxygen from reaching the roots, which can slowly suffocate and kill the tree. Structural instability, this is probably our, one of our highest concerns, severing a large portion of the root system can compromise this tree's stability, making it more vulnerable to falling during windstorms. A silver maple's relatively soft wood makes this a greater concern. Um, and the final is decline in depth. The combination of root loss and suffocation can lead to branch and crown dieback or even the tree's complete failure and death years down the road. As you know, in the last several years, we've had multiple um, days over a hundred degrees. I've looked that up and in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, there were twenty seven of those days. And during both of those years, we lost major tree branches from this tree and with no winds, no storm, no nothing, just dropped. And we were quite shocked to have that happen and we um, did some research and found out that it was because of the high heat that was causing stress on the tree and caused it to drop those um, branches. Um, and if the high root, if if we cut those roots on the west side where the sidewalk was going to be placed and where the winds generally come out of the west for our storms, storms in this area. Um, we believe that the the tree would then fall towards the house, which would um, create a safety hazard for the people us who are living in the, in the house. Um, so also Centurion um, mentioned that um, in the application that we would be losing uh, twenty four trees and five hundred ninety six caliber inches of trees would be impacted in our neighborhood if we did detached sidewalks throughout the neighborhood. So that's just another fact that we included in our variance application. Um, so we also would need to move our um, Veolia Water Service, which was installed in May of twenty twenty four, which is expensive and may also harm the tree. When we installed the water service, we um, drilled underground um, with this company called Acubore and we did that so we wouldn't cut the tree uh, roots and damage the tree. And so um, we spent a thousand dollars just to bore from the meter to our home. Um, and we did that to um, protect the tree. The, we also have an existing and working well uh, Veolia allowed us to keep it because it's just on the outside of the home. It's not used for drinking. Um, and it's to help us for irrigation when the irrigation gets turned off in um, the fall or before the irrigation's turned on in the spring. And so capping or damaging uh, a working well due to detached sidewalk construction would also create undue hardship. So we submit that the sum of all these items um, presents an undue hardship for um, for us in in this um, instance. So we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like you're coming up to finish out the last couple minutes. Great.
Chairman, Commissioners, David Crawford with Centurion Engineers. Again, I had a little bit, two minutes left, so I figured I'd address the subdivision portion. We agree with the conditions of approval as are presented. Um, and we do uh, respectfully indicate or say that this is a subdivision that is in keeping with the neighborhood. It's not unusual in character, so we feel it's a good fit with the neighborhood and feel it'll be an attractive addition to uh, another lot within the city of Boise. And as far as the variants, I think we've laid that out pretty well tonight. Uh, the potential loss of not only the trees on this site, but the future development of detached sidewalks in the neighborhood should it occur puts at risk at least or just under six hundred caliber inches of trees as it stands today. We didn't need to get an arborist to do our own survey and measure trees, which we did. So it, and that's indicated in our narrative. And I'll stand for any questions you have.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, before we get to questions, we want to check in with the Neighborhood Association. I'm guessing that West Valley is not here. Don't see anybody in person or online. Okay? And so with that, we will move to questions from the commission. Are there any questions? No, I'll start off with a couple unless Commissioner Mooney has some.
Sure, I'll start. Since the chair would probably rather wait, uh, Madam Chair, the uh, a lot of talk about the trees. So Steph, uh, Jesse, the arborist report that we got from the city forester was pretty limited. Um, it didn't speak to all this discussion we just heard from the applicant regarding uh, the silver maple, the Mugo pines. Could you talk to what the city's position is on these particular trees and such?
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, so there was no arborist report that was support or submitted with the application materials. Uh, and so when our forestry department reviews landscape plans, they do look for an arborist report to um, say the size, health and species of a tree and whether it will be removed or not requiring mitigation. Uh, there were no trees that were indicated that it would be removed uh, with the detached sidewalk that was originally proposed. There was one tree that was um, to be relocated and it was the tree that was planted within the last couple of years.
I'm sure follow up for the applicant then. So uh, David said, what uh, what is, what's your assertion regarding the trees and why not an arborist report?
Chairman, Commissioner, uh, we did not submit an arborist report because it was apparent with our original application where we had shown the detached sidewalk that it ran right through that Mugo pine. Uh, was it, it was apparent.
Madam Chair, so the, so for staffs, the Mugo pine's really the only one that's the detached sidewalk is going to impact. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the the pine is more of a shrub and so that would have to be removed for detached sidewalk. I think the tree in question was the maple, but that was not indicated to be removed in the plans with the detached sidewalk.
Okay, can I keep going, Madam Chair? Uh, one of the statements from the applicant then was uh, the detached sidewalk is unnecessary for pedestrian safety, which kind of flies in the face of our code, which is obviously why we do detached sidewalks. Do, does the code define when it's appropriate to move from a detached to an attached sidewalk based on decreased traffic, slower traffic? Is, do we have kind of a parameter for that or is it subjective staff interpretation of when we can go from detached to attached for pedestrian safety?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, it, the code does not specify um, a traffic level that is um, a threshold for when attached sidewalk would be allowed. Does allow the planning director uh, to make a determination whether it's appropriate on local streets. And because there's not really much sidewalk in the area, uh, the termination was that you should go with what the code says uh, for detached sidewalk rather than allow attached. Typically, when we see attached sidewalk in infill projects, it's connecting to other attached sidewalk or there are a significant number of trees or other site constraints.
Right, so in the city's position on detached or attached sidewalks as we build them piece by piece as applications come forward. Um, one of the applicant's statements was that um, none of the other properties will likely redevelop because they're not large enough lots. But in fact, that's not true because any redevelopment in that area would trigger some kind of streetscape improvements. Is that true?
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, any redevelopment of any of the lots that are currently there uh, like a subdivision or if they wanted to do like a a triplex, which would be allowed in the R one C zone, would require sidewalk improvements. Um, additionally, ACHD does sometimes do infill projects and um, do some sidewalk connection. So you know, it's not necessarily that nothing would ever redevelop in this area.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Torres.
Um, I want to go back to the maple for a second. Um, understanding that in the staff report, it's not indicated that anything other than the shrub would be impacted by the detached sidewalk. Um, can you speak to their concerns about having to the the impacts on the maple, even if the maple didn't have to be removed as far as the roots and and other potential problems for the tree? Since it is a sixty year old maple.
Madam Chair Commissioners, um, it is difficult without an arborist report to um, you know, make some of these judgments and that's why we do want to see those with a subdivision submittal so our forestry department can review the arborist report and determine, you know, whether mitigation is needed or what impacts could be to any uh, trees on site.
Thank you. I'll have a kind of a follow up question to that one. Um, in the past, when we're dealing with properties and detached sidewalks and mature trees, sometimes we'll conditioned to work with an arborist to determine, you know, a way to kind of divert the sidewalk around the tree. Um, is that something that would that the city would be okay with in this particular situation if it is determined by an arborist that this tree is in good shape and warrants all the, you know, consideration?
Uh, Madam Chair Commissioners, uh, that is something that we've done in the past. I believe that um, based on, you know, some updated Proag standards and just uh, general wish for consistency uh, with installed sidewalk, uh, that's something that we are moving away from but could be considered. But again, we don't have the, all the information on that tree and what the impacts would be.
True. Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Torres.
So continuing on that line of questioning, if we were to do that just as a point of order, would we deny the variance and add that condition to the recommendation for the approval of the subdivision? Or what's the proper proceed, procedure to do that?
Uh, Madam Chair Commissioners, that is one way that that could be addressed is to add a condition of approval to work with an arborist and um, you know, find a sidewalk design that would accommodate the tree roots and, you know, mostly detach, but that's up to the commission tonight.
Great. And um, a separate line of question. I know one of the um, arguments for the variance was also about irrigating the, you know, the detached strip of sidewalk. And I think I read in the irrigation company's letter that pressurized irrigation would be required as part of the subdivision. Is that correct? So this landscape strip would be required to be irrigated with pressurized irrigation by the irrigation companies. Did I read that correctly?
Uh, Madam Chair Commissioners, I would have to go back and look at the irrigation company comments, but that is a general subdivision standard.
Okay. So it would not be subject to flood irrigation regardless of you know, whether flood irrigation was available, it would not be subject to flood irrigation. It would be required to have pressurized irrigation just as part of the subdivision itself.
That's correct. Okay. Right.
Listen, well, if there's no other questions, we will move on to the public portion of this uh, hearing. Um, so I will look at the signup sheet. I see Mark and Jeannie Verbonc. I don't know if you'd like to testify again. If you would, you have three minutes. Okay, perfect. We'll come on up and if you'll state your name and address, you will have three minutes.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Mark Verbannick and I live at twenty one oh six North Cribben Street in Boise, eight three seven one three. I would just simply add that the area is flood irrigated and there's never been any pressurized irrigation whatsoever in that entire residential section. It's a one-way entry off of Fairview Avenue. It's a circular kind of a neighborhood. Most of the properties originally were quite a bit larger. There were some as much as five acres. There have been a few splits on those years. Um, I was actually raised in this house, so I've lived in that area for a long time. And I have seen uh, numerous people coming in and out of there and go, wow, this is such a beautiful rural area and such a densely populated uh, section of Boise. How did you keep it so nice? Well, I think it's basically set up that way so that people have more of a country feeling inside a city area. And I think that by attaching the sidewalk directly to the existing street, we will be in more conforming to a rural setting. Having to have uh, pedestrians Having to have pedestrians step off of the road, eight feet past a planter strip, onto a sidewalk that only exists for 200 feet, and then have to step back onto the road, I don't think very many people will use that sidewalk. And it certainly doesn't sound to me like it's going to do anything to enhance public safety for the pedestrians in that particular circumstance. So I would like to submit that we would strongly believe an attached sidewalk would be the easiest and least expensive way for everyone, including the city, who would like to preserve, I would assume, as many trees as possible and shrubs to be able to maintain that rural feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next up, I have Jeannie Burbannick. I just realized I've been mispronouncing your name, so I apologize. You have three minutes if you would like to testify as well. Would you like to testify for three minutes? All right, so moving on, I have, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
David Crawford, Centurion Engineers.
Well, would you like to testify for three minutes?
Yes, I would.
Okay, perfect.
Just like to, if there's nobody else that wants to testify ahead of me, didn't seem like there was.
You were next up?
Okay.
So Jeannie was ahead of you, and it sounds like she passed up on her option, so.
Yes.
Okay.
So I would like to address a few of the issues that we've talked about tonight. Yes, pressurized irrigation is required by city code to be made available to the development with very few exceptions. And one of those exceptions is to secure a waiver from the city engineer after approval of the preliminary plat for the subdivision.
Well, real quick, and just so you're aware, you do have five minutes here and a few minutes to rebut your, to rebut anything else you'll hear. So I don't want you to double up on your, on your efforts here.
Either that or I skip the five, right?
But there might be other public test, I think the, the point being, there might be other public testimony that you can address in your five minutes if you'd like to hold for that.
Or I take the opportunity now and then.
And then we just don't do the rebuttal. Okay. Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make you aware of that one, yeah.
I don't anticipate they're going to be here, but anyway, so.
Please continue.
There is a, there is the availability for the city engineer to issue a waiver of the pressurized irrigation requirement as long as the surface water irrigation is available to the development. In this particular instance, the Verbancks only get water three times a week, which means that a pressurized irrigation system is likely not going to work for this development because it needs to be available 24/7 to be able to irrigate it. So now perhaps we can put one in, perhaps we can't, we won't know until that's studied officially, but we'll have, it is an option to be able to secure that waiver from the city engineer, and we have done it in, on past projects many times. So it really comes down to the, the numbers that we have to go through with the, the city. Many times, it was mentioned that a public neighborhood project had come through and put in sidewalks. I'm aware of several recent ACHD neighborhood improvement programs. None of them put in detached sidewalks. They all planned for attached sidewalks because there's additional right-of-way dedication that needs to occur. The impacts to the adjoining properties are mitigated. The, there's a future project planned down off Adam Street, Playin 36, that's anticipated for 2028 construction. All of it's attached sidewalk. So it's been my experience that when those neighborhood projects comes through, they almost always get attached because the additional costs and expenditures of the right-of-way dedications. The, while, and then to address the arborist, perhaps an arborist would come through and say, it's a very healthy tree, but if it's taken out, then you just got to mitigate for it somewhere else on site. What we're saying is we're losing mature landscaping that's in the neighborhood that is much more valuable than providing for new landscaping that is yet to mature. I, I think that's what the takeaway is from that. So I think the project as presented is a good project that's in keeping with the neighborhood. And I do believe that the variance request is not one that hasn't gone felt complex.
All right, and unfortunately, that is the end of your time, but thank you very much. All right, and so with that, we'll close the public hearing portion as, because that served as rebuttal as well. But first, actually, I do want to check in online, make sure there's nobody online who would like to testify on this item. Don't see any hands raised, and nobody else in person who would like to testify on this item? Okay, all right, now that will close the public portion of the hearing as we discussed. That was rebuttal as well. And then the item is before the commission. And as a reminder, we are the recommending body. Are we the recommending body on the variance as well? Okay, we are the deciding body on the variance. We're the recommending body on the subdivision.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seha.
I move that we deny the variance CVA 25-41 based on the staff report, and that we recommend approval to City Council of S U B 24-54. Yeah.
Right, all right. I have a motion to deny the variance and recommend approval of the subdivision. Do I have a second? Going once. Think we may have a failed motion. Yep, I think we may have a failed motion for lack of a second. In that case, I will entertain alternative motion. I don't think you need to withdraw. I think it just fails for lack of a second, yeah. Yeah, it just fails. Okay, confirmation.
I'll take a stab at it.
All right. Commissioner Torres.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the subdivision. And, and with the added, and I'm sorry, and deny the variance with the added condition to the subdivision, I think, that the applicant worked with an arborist to determine a rooting for the detached sidewalk that preserves, that assesses the, the health of the maple and works around it if possible. I, I totally botched that up. Hopefully you understood what I was trying to say.
A second.
All right. All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Torres and a second from Commissioner Don. Do you have any discussion, Commissioner Torres?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I've gone back and forth on this. I debated whether to just deny the variance. I debated whether to approve it. And, and this is kind of the compromise I've come to based on our discussion and our questions. I understand your concerns about a detached sidewalk. I, I do. However, we have to take the bigger picture for the city with the code, and the code is trying to fill in a sidewalk network where there hasn't been one in the past, rather than compounding a mistake that was made over decades and generations of not building sidewalks when we built subdivisions. And so I don't want to rip out your maple. You know, I don't want to impact your, your yard, but I, I want to figure out a way where we can get what the city's requires through the code, but also preserve the quality of life at your house, the safety of your tree, the health of your tree. And I hear your, your, your comments about the other properties in this development or in this, in this neighborhood. The reality is we have to consider each item individually, and it is possible those could be developed in the future, and we would want to have sidewalks there, and it just leaves a gap in the network. While this may be a low-traffic street, the reality is that the, the reason for the detached sidewalk is not just for the purpose of trees and plants and all that. It is a, it is a safety thing that we have as a policy citywide. It's a, it's a buffer between traffic and the sidewalk. It's to protect against these things. So with that, that's why I'm recommending this compromise position, hopefully, that will accomplish what everybody needs in this, in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Torres. Any more discussion, Commissioner Don?
Just basically what he said.
Absolutely. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mooney.
I'm in support of the motion based on Commissioner Torres's comments, and I appreciate that as well, that, that we've got a, this is a good compromise. I was leaning towards detached based on Mr. and Mrs. Verbanck's testimony, and, but I think this gives the city and the applicant an opportunity to thread the needle here. So it's, it's a compromise I think is well worth proceeding forward with.
Right, and I'll just chime in as well, and I might suggest a little bit of wording amendment to your, to your motion. I agree with your motion. I would kind of clarify to, that the applicant is to work with an arborist to determine the health of the tree and assist in placement of the sidewalk in proximity to the existing silver maple tree, if warranted. If that's okay.
Madam Chair, the only thing I might clarify is whether or not this community forestry has an opportunity to review that proposal, or if it's just the applicant and the arborist that they choose that gets, that determines that. I would just clarify that.
Commissioner Torres, I'll let you weigh in since you're the motioner.
I am okay with your amendment to the, to the motion and with the added clarifying remarks that yes, community forestry would get a chance to review it.
All right, so is that, are we good on the motion process? Okay, perfect. So with that, otherwise, you know, I, I think it, it makes sense. I think right now, there's no sidewalks on that street except for that one section of attached sidewalk, but that doesn't mean that that's always going to be that way. And, you know, we could get 20 years down the road, be looking at, you know, a couple of properties on there, wanting to do some sort of development that triggers a sidewalk. The sidewalk's been there for 20 years without connection, but now it's got a reason to be there. And that's kind of how we build sidewalks, even if it's over an extended period of time. Even if it doesn't make sense at that specific time, I think that that's how we build sidewalks. Otherwise, you know, in 20 years, when that other project goes to build a sidewalk, there's 200 feet that doesn't have one or that has an attached sidewalk. So I think building the sidewalk now as detached per code with sensitivity to the tree, I think makes a lot of sense if that tree is warrant, is worth saving. And that's, that is difficult to tell when there is no arborist report. So there's a lot of ifs and, and ifs and, and, you know, if warranted, just because we don't have the arborist report on that one to, to make that specific determination, because maybe it isn't worth saving, you know, and hopefully it is. But with that, we have a motion to deny CVA 25-41, and a motion to recommend approval of S U B 24-54 with the added condition to work with an arborist and city forestry to determine the health of the silver maple tree and assist in the placement of the sidewalk in proximity to the tree if the health warrants. Does that sound about right, Commissioner Torres? Okay, perfect. Will the clerk please call her role?
Moore.
Yes.
Mooney.
Yes.
Seha.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay, our last item on the agenda is item number 10. That's CVA 25-49, also for Centurion Engineers at 911 North Mitchell Street. It's variances, CVA from the streetscape standards, access and connectivity requirement on 1.69 acres in an R1C residential traditional zone. And S U B 25-28 for reckless subdivision. This was deferred from August 11th. It's also at 911 North Mitchell Street. The preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of 12 buildable and one common lots on 1.69 acres in R1C residential traditional zone. And Mr. Dennis, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. As you said, the item before you is a preliminary plat for residential subdivision comprised of 12 buildable and one common lots, and a variance to deviate from the streetscape and connectivity standards on 1.69 acres in an R1C residential traditional zone. The property currently contains a single-family house that's planned to be retained with 11 lots being subdivided, subdivided behind it to the west. All of the proposed lots conform with the dimensional standards of the R1C zone. The infill subdivision includes the improvement and extension of two existing public streets and one private street. Starting with Mitchell Street on the far east is a collector roadway and will be improved with a 10-foot-wide detached sidewalk with street trees because it's an arterial or a collector. Mesquite Court is a local roadway just to the south as shown in green. That portion, the northern portion of the Mesquite Street section will be improved with detached sidewalks with street trees. Mesquite Court also curves down to the south, and that would be extended north. And in fully, it, it'll be fully improved on both sides with curb gutter, detached sidewalk and street trees. And it'll sub to a 2.9-acre parcel to the north, which currently contains a single-family home, and that's shown here in orange. A privacy fence is proposed along the northern side of the subdivision boundary, boundary as shown, as shown in yellow. And the recommended condition of approval requires signage be installed at the terminus of Indy Avenue, stating that that road will be extended in the future. Included with this application is a variance request to waive the requirement to install a five-foot-wide detached sidewalk with street trees along the northern side of the proposed private street. A hardship exists on site in that the limited width of the subject property would result in a full, fully built-out private street consuming almost half of the width of the site and would remove over 500 square feet from each of the four proposed lots there on reckless. Additionally, since each lot is proposed right above the 3,500-square-foot minimum lot area threshold, this standard streetscape requirement would result in the removal of at least one, one lot. Additionally, a sidewalk along the northern side of the private street would not provide as meaningful of a pedestrian connection to these proposed buildable lots as the, as it is proposed along, adjacent to them, along the south side. Therefore, as stated within the project report, the planning team concurs with the applicant's cited hardship and finds that the requested variance complies with all of the required findings as summarized on your screen here and within the project report. Lake correspondence was received from an adjacent neighbor to the north as summarized on your screen and within the lake correspondence memo, mainly regarding privacy associated with the surrounding developments. As stated within the lake correspondence memo, most of these have been addressed. These concerns have been addressed, and the planning team recommends no changes to the original conditions, original recommendation of approval. So in conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the preliminary plat and the variance request, and I will stand for any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Matt. Moving on, we will now hear from the applicant. You'll state your name and address again. You'll have 10 minutes.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, David Crawford, Centurion Engineers, 2323 South Vista Avenue. I'm here representing the owners on reckless subdivision tonight. The project is a subdivision and a request for a variance. We do agree with the conditions of approval as written with the subdivision and respectfully request approval of that. We did have a neighborhood meeting where we discussed the variance, which is a variance from requiring detached sidewalk on the north side of the reckless lane, which is along the property's northerly boundary and kind of goes west. So one thing that we appreciate staff's work with us on this project, it's been through many iterations. For a project that's only 116 feet in width and almost 1,300 feet long, it, or excuse me, almost 700 feet long, it's it's difficult to work with. We do have a existing street on our southerly boundary and one that bisects the property in the middle that will deadhead into an existing Boise City Park, or excuse me. There's a empty lot to the north of us that, and that lot to the north is where Boise City Park is. So we considered that with staff through many different layouts and iterations on how, whether this reckless lane was going to be a public street or whether it was going to be a private street. If we probably went through, I don't know, six, seven different configurations. Ultimately, this is where we landed. Reckless Lane allows the property to the north to redevelop access reckless lane and the sidewalk would only impede the development of the property to the north. That in keeping with several projects that we've been part of and several projects that we're aware of when there's a private lane. There's been several variances granted recently that to allow sidewalk on one side. So we're not asking for any special privilege in that regard. We believe we have an attractive development and with the development of this project with the variance, we believe that it'd be a great addition to the city of Boise and to the needed housing market. One thing I would iterate is that many times I get in front of city council and they ask me, could we get more lots in? With this proposal, we were able to, I think, get two more than what we had originally envisioned. We believe that is in keeping with, in consideration with what development code wants. With that, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Great. Thank you very much. Before we get to questions, we will check in with the Neighborhood Association. I'm guessing that there's nobody from the Neighborhood Association in here. West Boise. Nope. Okay. With that, we will move to questions from the Commission. Any questions from the Commission? Commissioner Mooney.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Matt, one of the texts out of our project or your, your analysis was that the northern side of reckless lane will be improved with detached sidewalks in the future when the neighboring property develops. Do we, does that need to be in a condition anywhere for this approval?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Mooney, thank you for the question. The, that has been included as a condition of approval. It's, I believe it's, it's included as a plat note, a required plat note that future access can be provided to the northern lot through reckless lane. And that was part of the discussion that we, with the, as the city had, had with the applicant and that they, they were amendable to.
So far, is that, that's condition number seven, is that correct? Is that the one that covers?
Uh, Mr., uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mooney, I don't have the project report up in front of me, but I can definitely double check that for you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Sure. We might give them just a minute to check out condition, condition number seven while everybody.
Yes, as it looks, Madam Chair, uh, condition number seven is basically lots six and seven, so that's not really the north side of reckless lane.
I wonder maybe if it's condition number six.
That was my concern is that we talk about obviously reckless, but we don't talk about the possibility of future development to the north and how we'll handle the streetscape on the north side.
Sure. Okay. So maybe the question is, what happens when that property develops to the north? Is that going to be conditioned at that time?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mooney, that is included as condition 11D.
There you go.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. All right. Any other questions? My commission? I think that sums up mine as well. So if there's no other questions, we will move to public testimony. If there's anybody in person who would like to testify, please come on up. Oh, and I guess I have the sign up sheet and I'm guessing maybe you're Kimmy White.
I am.
Perfect. Please state your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Kimmy White. My address is 11439 West Daniel Street, Boise, Idaho, 83713. Good evening, Commissioners. I know it's late. We all want to go home, so I'll be quick. Thank you for allowing me to give my verbal testimony on behalf of my parents, Harold and John Buckwits, who live on and own the property on the north side of this proposed development, 915 North Mitchell Street. My parents have also submitted their written testimony as well. My parents have lived there for 45 years. My dad has built their home. Now, I can't, as you can imagine, my parents' way of life has greatly been impacted by all the growth around them. There's a city park on the north side of their property. They have an open ditch still on their property that runs through their field, which they use for flood irrigation still. At the neighborhood meeting that I attended on August 7th with the developers and the engineers, Centurion, which and the other neighbors were present. My brother and I asked them and informed them of my parents' concerns, which is mostly concerning their privacy. That they would like to have a privacy fence if possible installed along their property boundary for the development. And Centurion was very kind and gracious and said that they would install that fence along their boundary line, which was very, very nice of them. And my concerns have been addressed. I, I heard Mr. Dennis say that that fence has been included, so I'm very grateful. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record and that's why I'm here. So I'm very grateful. And so I just wanted to make sure that my parents' concerns were addressed to the best of my ability. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next on the sign up sheet, we have Rick Church. Is Rick Church in the chambers? Maybe he will. Okay. Uh, after that, we have Shirley Church. Maybe not in the chambers either. Okay. Well, that's all I have on the sign up sheet. So if anybody else would like to testify, who's in the chambers, please come on up. Okay. And if there's anybody online, I'm not sure if there's anybody else online anymore. Okay. Nobody else online? Oh, yep, there is. Okay. Looks like we have Pamela Parker online. Pamela, if you'll state your name and your address, you'll have three minutes as well.
My name is Pamela Parker and I live at 946 North Ancestral Lane, Boise, Idaho, 83704. And we are right behind the property that's being proposed for development and the property to the north. I have a couple of concerns about privacy to the west. I know that there was indication that there's going to be privacy fence possibly put up along the north side, but have not heard anything about to the west. As well as I'm concerned about the amount of traffic it'll add with the school right down the street from out. We already have most of the kids in the area that have to walk to the elementary school because they don't have busing available. And with that, we have cars that, because most parents will go ahead and drop their kids off and pick their kids up where they end up having cars lined down the road already on Mitchell because there's not enough infrastructure to, to take care of that as well as lined all the way down the, the street on down Mitchell to the north. And that's a, a big concern of mine for safety to the kids and, and everything without the infrastructure actually being done prior to developing and taking every little piece of, of bare land that we have. I know that there's a need for, for housing to a point, but I also looked and there's a lot of different homes that are for sale that are not being sold. There's also a lot of apartments just right in the area that have vacancies. So I'm not exactly sure the whole purpose of, of developing at this point in such a small little area and where it would be so impactful, I think, on safety and the security of our children and the street being so narrow on Mitchell. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And with that, I think that's the last person online. Okay. And I think that's nobody else in the chambers. So with that, we will move to rebuttal by the applicant. If you'd like to rebut and maybe answer some questions, we have, you have five minutes.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, David Crawford of Centurion Engineers again. Really appreciate Kimmy showing up tonight. We were, we she, we did chat with her at the neighborhood meeting. And, and I believe if we can pull the preliminary plat up, we are going to continue the irrigation facilities to its historic discharge point. It is pretty important. You can kind of see it where it crosses North Indy Avenue from the south side of the street kind of cuts over northeast to about the center line of the road. But that irrigation ditch also supplies a Boise City Park pond that it utilizes for pressurized irrigation. And I have been in contact with the city engineer that's in charge of that, just to make sure that we're not doing anything funny. So I spoke with him about that several months ago. And we're pleased that we could put up a privacy fence along our northerly boundary and would further state that we will continue that along our westerly boundary as well. And hopefully that will address the concerns noted by Pamela Parker. One of the other, other concerns noted by Mrs. Parker is that children walking to school, you know, there is existing attached walk that's along there. And we're going to be, of course, setting the precedent with detached walks. So perhaps over time that'll alleviate that much of a concern because there's not a lot we can do about traffic in the area with this infill development. We simply don't do anything to impact that intersection. So and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. No questions at this point. So with that, we will close the public hearing portion and render a decision. As a reminder, this, we are the deciding body on the variance and the recommending body on the subdivision.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Don.
I'll give it my best.
All right.
I recommend that we approve DVA 2549 at 911 North Mitchell Street for the, to deviate from the streetscape standards as well as recommend for approval, SUB 2528 reckless subdivision, again at 911 North Mitchell Street.
Perfect. I have a motion to approve the variance and recommend approval of the subdivision. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Don's and a second from Commissioner Mooney. Do you have a discussion, Commissioner Don?
No.
All right. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mooney.
It's a, it's a pleasure to finish on this one because the comments from, from you in, in respect to your parents and the fact that your father built the place and, and the develop, the developer, the applicant, David, thanks for your working with the neighbors. I mean, that's a nice way to finish where someone comes up and says, good job on, on an application. So it's a pleasure to second that and sign off.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Mooney. Any other discussion? Perfect. Well, I don't have anything else to add. So yeah, thank you again for good application and, and good discussion. With that, we have a motion to approve CVA 25-49 and recommend approval of SUB 25-28. Will the clerk please call their role?
Moore.
Yes.
Mooney.
Yes.
Deha.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
All in favor? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I can just say one thing real quick. Commissioner Mooney, it has been a pleasure to serve with you up here. I've learned a lot from you. You are definitely going to be missed. I will endeavor to fill the void left by you up here and try to come up with it as good a questions as you have in the time I've been up here. You know, publics, we, it gets lambasted a lot, but public service is a noble calling and you've done a great job at it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Torres. Yeah, I, when I first started, Interfaith was my first one and, and so that was kind of traumatic, as you can imagine. And, and ever since then, I think it's important that we ask those questions and I've kind of gotten the reputation of being the guy that, that has a lot of probing questions, but I think it's good for the, the public to hear that we're thinking about all those crazy things. And it kind of airs out the gray areas that we're stuck with making judgments on. So I appreciate all the comments from all of my fellow commissioners and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Thanks, staff.
Commissioner Deha.
I just want to echo what Commissioner Torres just said. Um, you know, Gillespie, Commissioner Gillespie, I was so sad to see him leave and now I'm really sad to see you leave. Don, I've learned a lot from you. Um, you really get into the detail, the minutia, and I appreciate that.
Commissioner Mooney, I'll just chime in here as well. Echo same. And yeah, it's been, it's been a pleasure to have you on the, on the Commission. I'll, I'll definitely miss having you on here. And before that, I think you were part of the Neighborhood Association. So we've, we've been kind of working together for a while now. So it's a, it's been great. Your commentary, your concerns are, you know, definitely appreciated. I think it adds, you know, a different take on to things that I don't necessarily see. So yeah, appreciate that and all your time and your service as well. Commissioner Don.
Everything that they said and more. Thank you again for being here and participating.
And then before we sign off officially, I, I thank you to Officer Moreno as well for all your service and all your time at our hearings. I think you've been here since I've started and probably well before. So it's a lot of hearings and a lot of nights that you've dedicated to, to the city and to, to serving us. So appreciate your service as well. All right. And with that, we are adjourned.